A meeting of the Board of Trustees of North Idaho College to order. We have a quorum. I would like to have everyone join me then in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
There was no one that signed up for public contact. But public comment is always available at any board meetings. So in the future, people need to know that if they wish to speak to our agenda item, please sign up and we're happy to listen to you. We're going to celebrate success. Sarah Garcia, Sage Stoddard. Always nice to celebrate success.
Good evening Chairman Wold, trustees and guests. This evening, we are, I have asked our esteemed Executive Director of the Area Agency on Aging to talk to you about all the wonderful things that we do through their office. And this has been a long time coming. I don't believe Sage has had an opportunity to speak in front of the board before. So hopefully you'll enjoy her conversation. So Sage?
Thank you.
So good evening Chairman Wold, Board of Trustees, President Swain and guests. So my name is Sage Stoddard and I'm the Director of Area Agency on Aging, or I like to call it AAA just for short, of North Idaho College. We are one of the agencies housed under North Idaho College. So I think you may have heard the phrase in the past that North Idaho College takes care of its community from infants to its seniors. Well, we are the agency that takes care of the seniors. So first of all, a few details. We have a staff of about 15 people. And we're actually located off campus. So we're located on Highway 95 in Canfield, kind of over by the Olive Garden. I've been with the agency a little over three years. And our funding is both state and federal funding. It's administered through the Idaho Commission on Aging, or ICOa. Our budget this year is about 2.7 million. And about half of our budget goes to our senior nutrition program, which I'll talk about shortly. So I'd like to give you a brief overview of some of our programs and then talk about some of the highlights for the last couple of years. So our primary population is people aged 60 and over, disabled adults and their families. Some programs that we administer are Adult Protection Services, Long Term Care Ombudsman, Senior Nutrition Services, Respite, Homemaker and Chor Program. We have a staff member who was on the Senior Medicare Patrol. This program prevents healthcare fraud. We partner and help fund programs such as Powerful Tools for Caregivers, Fit and Fall Programs, Idaho Legal Aid, Advanced Care Planning, Mind Over Matter Incontinence Program, Friendly Color Program, and the list goes on. So we have nutrition contracts with the 13 senior centers in the five northern counties. Only a portion of their funding comes from AAA. We provide a reimbursement amount for each home-delivered meal or meal served in a congregate setting at the senior centers. So during the pandemic, we were able to give them additional funding through CARES or ARPA or another meal grant to help with help, to help with things like to-go cartons or sanitizing equipment, et cetera. So we were able to give each senior center almost $15,000 to help modernize their building. So here are some examples of some things that they did. So the Fernwood Senior Center purchased a big reader board. The Postfall Senior Center was able to pave their parking lot. Many of the senior centers were able to buy new refrigerators or freezers that were much needed. Another needed program that I would like to talk about is caregiver respite. So what exactly is the definition of respite? It is simply a break, a short period of rest or relief for those voluntarily taking care of a loved one at home. So it's said that one out of four people in Idaho actually assumes a caregiving role. So I'm sure that many, many of you in this room right now are care, have a caregiving role for someone. So we have formal respite providers that we contract with for respite services with our eligible customers. But because of workforce shortages that created long waiting lists for these providers and customers not wanting strangers in their homes caring for their loved ones during the COVID pandemic, we rolled the dice and piloted a new consumer-directed respite program. This was especially valuable in the rural areas where it was hard to find providers. So what is a consumer-directed respite, or what is a consumer-directed program? This is when eligible care providers get to choose a family member or a friend or someone they trust to give them respite or a break. The eligible care, the eligible caregiver pays them an amount that they have agreed upon, and then the AAA can reimburse the caregiver. Of course, there are maximum total amounts which are determined at enrollment. So for example, a caregiver can pay Nick the neighbor for sitting with her husband who cannot be left alone while she goes to the grocery store, attends a fit and fall class, or just disappears for an hour or two to regroup. Nick the neighbor might be a familiar face for her husband, so it's an easy transition for this caregiver. Since we piloted this consumer-directed program just a little over two years ago, 54 family caregivers were served the first year, 91 the second year, and we are expected to serve about 120 this program year that we're in. Again, these are caregivers who would otherwise have no respite support, either due to lack of available formal providers or simply because a formal provider was not an option. Our focus for this program has been serving the more rural areas. And I'm happy to report that we have set up services for caregivers in the following areas: Athol, Bayview, Blanchard, Bonners Ferry, Carywood, Clark Fork, Kokolala, Harrison, Hauser, Hope, Le Cleed, Moye Springs, Naples, Osborne, Pinehurst, Plummer, Pondure, Potlatch, Priest River, Spirit Lake, Rathrum, Segal, Sandpoint, Smelterville and Worley, plus some of the larger areas like Coeur d'Alene, Postfals and Hayden. So here are a few of the comments that we've received. "This has been a lifeline. It has enabled my dad to have financial assistance to hire a wonderful respite provider. He is a new man. Even though it's only a few hours a week, it has been of immense value to add to my dad and stepmom. My dad is taking care of my stepmom who has advanced dementia. His health was declining along with added depression. With the kind assistance of the AAA team, we've been able to get them moving in the right direction. Thank you from the bottom of our hearts." This is from Tracy. Jaclyn says, "You cannot imagine how much the support has improved my quality of life. I feel like I can breathe again after seven years of taking care of mom. I am so grateful for this life-saving program." And Pam says, "What a relief this program is. I felt like it was okay for me to leave and not having the guilt was a huge weight off my shoulders." Because of the consumer-directed respite program was such a big hit, this last February, we also piloted a consumer-directed homemaker program. So homemaker services include light housekeeping, such as changing bed linens, assisting with laundry, cleaning the bathrooms or kitchen and taking out trash, which is sometimes difficult for seniors to do. Again, we have contracts with formal providers who provide these services, but because of the shortage of workers, we accumulated a 93-person waitlist. This pilot would follow the spirit of our consumer-directed respite program and allow customers to recruit and pay individuals of their choice and then get reimbursed up to a certain amount. By the end of June, we were serving 65 seniors with our consumer-directed homemaker pilot program and it had almost eliminated our waitlist. We are continuing this program into this program year with a goal of serving 100 seniors. So during the beginning of the pandemic, we had another fun project. So the AAA partnered with the Coeur d'Alene Fire Department, Panhandle Health and the Medical Reserve Corps to get vaccines out to our homebound seniors. In total, we helped almost 150 homebound seniors in the five northern counties with their vaccination needs. Many seniors expressed their gratitude through this project. They were able to restart the in-home services they relied upon to help them stay independent in their homes. They were also excited to be reunited with vaccinated friends and family they haven't been able to see since the beginning of the difficult times. And lastly, I'd like to, I'd like to highlight our Long Term Care Ombudsman Program. So our ombudsman are advocates for seniors and long-term care facilities. I'm sure everyone has heard how hard the pandemic was on the seniors in the care facilities. Many family members were not allowed to visit their loved ones in care facilities during the pandemic. Some of these seniors became very lonely and isolated. Our ombudsman put together a quarterly newsletter that they deliver to all the residents, which has local information, games, coloring pages. Many residents look forward to this newspaper every few months. We also partner with the local elementary school, which has a kindergarten, which their kindergarten students have coloring, colored spring pictures. We're getting ready to do some Christmas pictures to hand out to the residents. The residents love these pictures and oftentimes hang them somewhere in their room. One of my favorite projects, though, is through a grant, our ombudsman were able to purchase about 50 robotic cats and delivered these cats to the care facilities focusing on residents with dementia. These robotic, these robotic cats were a huge hit. The lifelike cats breathe, purr, move and blink their eyes like a real cat. So I actually brought one with me to demonstrate. And I am not a cat person, okay? So one of the residents made a comment that it looked exactly like her cat. Our ombudsman said this resident typically sits in her wheelchair and looks at the ground. When the cat was put on her lap, she was beaming with happiness because she had her family cat back. The care facility said they haven't seen her so happy. Another resident actually told one of the facility administrators that they weren't feeding it with the right food because it was a little bony. Our ombudsman have had very positive comments regarding the robotic cats. One of the comments from a staff member is that the robotic cats are really helping with negative behaviors. These residents get so distracted with petting the cat that it diffuses some behavior issues. And I will have to say, it's actually started some little fights too within the residents because they like, they want the cat. So in closing, in closing, I would just like to say thank you to North Idaho College for helping AAA and our seniors. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Sage?
Or the cat?
My only comment probably is maybe you should leave the cats with the trustees can have that in case there's any problem.
Sure. Yeah, we actually have a dog also. So if anyone wants to come to our office and look at either the dog or the cat, we would be happy to help demonstrate.
I think Sage told me once that there was one resident who pet the cat so much that all the fur came off and they had to get a new cat. So I mean, it definitely, it's something that has helped out our community quite a bit.
Yes, absolutely.
Where is your office?
Our office is right on 95 in Canfield. It's in the old Orbis Building, if anyone remembers where that was. Yeah, so do come see us. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the constituent reports. Associate Students, Damian Maxwell. Damian?
Good evening Chairman Wold and Board of Trustees. The ASNC Student Government has been pretty busy this semester since the last meeting. So I think last Saturday, ASNC got together and we went through and actually fixed a pretty dangerous part of Yellow Trail on the Kenlin Park Trails. Now that the ASNC suite is done with the whole remodeling process, we actually had an ASNC open house where we invited students to come check out the new, new space and come study. We had the cotton candy machine out and everything. It was great. See, the ASNC also helped out with the United at the Library event over at the Mulstee Library. We also had the ASNC Strategic Planning Event where members of ASNC came in on a Saturday. We talked about the current projects ASNC has going on, a little bit about like leadership, and we got to hear from keynote speaker Tony Stewart. We've also received the response to the Academic Best Practice Resolution that we gave last year. And we're hoping tomorrow to have some open dialogue with some key players to kind of talk about those resolutions and get another resolution passed. After reading through the spring survey, we found out that a pretty good majority of students want more outdoor seating. And so we're actually going through and moving forward and trying to get more outdoor study areas for the students. And the Student Events Board has also been busy since the last meeting. They had the Dirt Card Event on September 30th, the Pumpkin Painting Event on October 10th, and the Nicktoberfest on October 20th. Any questions?
Are there any questions for Damian from Board members? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
From Faculty Assembly, Ben Tashida. Finally, finally Ben.
Chairman Wold, members of the Board, Chairman Wold, nice job. Nailed it. Faculty Assembly met at the beginning of August and we had a few things that we talked about. Before that faculty, I guess in that, since that time, faculty had midterm grades to report during that time. Students were working hard. A lot of them, for the first time, experienced some of the, the fun challenges of college, having multiple exams during the same week. And so that was a great opportunity for faculty to get feedback back to students and start some discussions about how to move forward. At our Faculty Assembly meeting, we found out that our SLOA Committee is getting a new chair. Lucas Brown is taking over for Laura Godfrey. I thank both of them for their service there. We had a first reading of our bylaws change. We have voting that will occur at our November meeting, after which time that will come to you as the Board for ratification. And then the other major topic was our tenure procedure. The tenure procedure came to Faculty Assembly last spring. We approved changes to the timeline as well as some of the terms in, in that procedure. It then was passed by the Senate and then President's Cabinet. And then it came back to Faculty Assembly with the question of whether or not to move current faculty in the tenure process onto that new procedure. Historically, when such updates have occurred, a lot of times we've had multiple tracks. So faculty would be left in, on a current procedure during that time. The changes here were not significant enough to warrant having that dual track. At least that was the suggestion. After that discussion occurred, the faculty did have a motion to move all current faculty members in the process onto this new procedure, and that did pass. And that concludes my report.
Are there any questions for Ben, from any of the trustees? Not appearing. Thank you very much, Ben.
Thank you.
Staff Assembly, Carrie Semeney.
Perfect. Good job. Thank you Chairman Wold, Board members, excuse me, and President Swain. Staff Assembly had a productive and informative meeting on October 13th. We started with new employee introductions. I continue to be blown away by the high level of talent that NIC continues to attract. We had a few shout-outs from staff to staff, celebrating our amazing work and the above and beyond attitude we all have towards our fellow coworkers. Our Sterling Silver winner was not announced at the meeting as she was not yet aware that she was the winner and we didn't want to give anything away. However, for the month of October, Dee Miller, our lead custodian, was honored for her commitment to NIC. Dee has been with NIC for 18 years and is dedicated to ensuring that the cleanliness and safety standards of NIC are always top-notch, including during the COVID pandemic. Thank you Dee for all your hard work. Our guest speakers included our very own Damian Maxwell, the ASNC President. Damian spoke to the staff and shared with us ASNC's plans for this year, the various activities they have going on, and different ways the staff can assist all students while we're here. Jeremy Sedet and Jessica Belfei from IT Accessibility were our next guests. Jeremy and Jessica shared ways that staff can ensure documents are accessible for others, asking that staff really evaluate whether that document needs to be in PDF form, which is not very accessible to those who are visually impaired, and encouraged everyone to utilize the check accessibility function of most documents. Jeremy and Jessica shared the different formatting means for ensuring your document is readable by a screen reader. This was very informative and we appreciated having them share their expertise with us. We shared several upcoming activities for staff and encourage attendance at these events as much as possible. We also explored potentially moving the meetings back to a hybrid option, in-person and over Zoom. So we'll continue to kind of look at this a little bit more in the future. That's it. Thank you so much for your time. Any questions?
Are there any questions for Carrie from the Board?
Thank you.
Not appearing. Thank you Carrie. Senate, Neil Doyle. Neil.
Thank you Chairman Wold, Board Trustees, President Swain, guests. Comparatively, I've got a much shorter report than everyone else tonight. Our last meeting was last Thursday on October 20th. Our primary focus was looking at the accessibility templates for our policy and procedures. We reviewed the, excuse me, we reviewed the examples that Ken sent over as well as an NIC branded template for us to look at for NIC. We had some discussion about that. We all liked the template. We liked the idea of getting the accessibility out there. So we agreed to pass that along to Shannon for further steps and implementation. That is actually all we covered this month. So that concludes my report on the NIC Senate. Any questions?
Are there any questions from Board members? Not appearing. Neil, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the Presidential Report. Dr. Swain.
Thank you. Chair of the Board and guests, as I said last time, our, our Small Business Development Coach, Bill Young, gave me some coaching tips. He said, "Always start with admission statements." So I'll do that again and then our big goal. "North Idaho College meets the diverse educational needs of students, employers and the North Idaho community it serves through a commitment to student success, educational excellence, community engagement and lifelong learning." And our goal is currently focusing on increasing enrollment to 5,000 students, for-credit students by the fall of 2023 and growing towards a goal of 6,000 by the fall of 2025. So the report is as follows. Start with the Metallica Scholars. Now, when I, when I got here, I really didn't know what Metallica Scholars were because my history with Metallica was much different than Scholars. But the Metallica Scholars Program provides a significant amount of funding. We are now in our fourth year and in all total, $210,000 in scholarships have been distributed. One of our first-year cohorts, so from four years ago, is now working at SpaceX and she is being recognized during their big annual event called All Within My Hands Foundation Event in Los Angeles. So an NIC student is being recognized for her leadership at SpaceX. I'm going to move on to our health professions. The NIC Nursing Program, and you'll hear a more complete report later, but the NIC Nursing, Nursing Program had its onsite accreditation visit October 18th through the 20th. As many of you know, the nursing program in NIC was ranked number one in the state. And it's largely, the rankings are largely governed by the, the N-plex pass rates. Nationally, nursing programs saw a significant decline in pass rates over the past few years, many of them dropping below 90%. However, NIC's pass rate has remained over 96%, even with a significant number of new faculty. The visiting team had nothing but accolades for the nursing program, citing several innovations as exemplars that they would like to share with other nursing programs. And you'll hear more about the nursing and the dental hygiene program from our Associate Dean and Director of Nursing, Earlene Pickett, later in the agenda. But she was also personally cited specifically for her enthusiastic leadership of the program, which is something that she's not likely to mention in her update. The, moving on then, Second Health Science, the Surgical Technology Program, because of the expanded space and the demand, has, has submitted the paperwork necessary to move from a maximum of two cohorts of 10 to three cohorts of 10, starting the fall, sorry, the spring of 2023. So it's a significant increase. It's a, it's a profession that's in high demand here in the, in the area. So we're trying to meet that demand by growing the program. On the 27th of October, between 4:00 and 7:00 PM, we're hosting an open house at the newly expanded Meyer Health Science Building. At 4:30, we'll have an official ribbon cutting for the new dental clinic. And when word of this got out, the entire campus decided they wanted to participate. So we expanded it to include more than 15 programs and a new version of the Parker Roadshow is coming down from Parker. Doug Anderson will be bringing that down and running that just outside and one, you know, it's got to be in a semi. So we're also hosting the Coeur d'Alene Chambers Business After Hours Program that night, all rolled together. And part of the reason is, just for the past three years, the, we have not been able to share what we're doing here on campus with the larger community. And so we're, we're trying to make this an event that the business community and, and the community at large is able to come in and, and share with us all the, all the great things that are taking place. And moving on from Health Science, also on October 27th, the Theater Department is hosting a play called The 39 Steps, which is an adaptation of Alfred Hitchcock movie. The play starts at 7:00, so you can come to the open house and then head right over to the theater, free and open to the public. And just as, as I mentioned, Earlene's work with Health Science, the, the head of our Communication and Foreign Arts Program, Joe Jacoby, was recently recipient of the 2022 Governor's Award in the Arts for Support of Arts Education. Onto Athletics. Several of our athletic teams, both men and women, are having excellent season. I've asked Alex Harris to provide a complete update later in the agenda as well. Update on searches, this has an implication for our accreditation. The VP for Business and Finance, the finalists have been identified. The search committee is scheduling campus visits, so that's progressing at a pretty rapid pace. The Chief Academic Officer and VP for Student Affairs, the search committee is working with a search firm. They've identified and received a number of applications and nominations. The committee has not started to evaluate the applications yet, but we have already blocked time in December and notified the search firm that we want folks to come early December for campus visits so we can quickly identify the finalists once, once we get to that point. The other two positions that are kind of high priority, the registrar. We had identified a finalist and we are awaiting a response on an offer that was made. Potentially you might have an update on that later. I don't have my glasses on, so I can't see. I'm looking for clues from the audience, but we were expecting a response on that offer today. The Director of Admissions, the finalists, the finalists that we had made an offer to received a counteroffer from their home institution, so they declined ours and we're currently reevaluating next steps. And Chairman Wold, that concludes my President's Report.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Dr.? Not appearing. We'll move on to constituent Not appearing, we'll move on to Consent Agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question on the Consent Agenda. The second item has a presenter. Typically, we don't have a presenter on a Consent Agenda item. I'm wondering about that.
If, if questions came up, that she was, she's here to answer any questions, but not intended to present unless questions come up.
Thank you.
I'll accept a motion then to...
Are we, are we discussing the Consent Agenda?
Only if we have a motion.
Because I, I have, I have to, one of the things, the minutes, I'm not satisfied with the minutes. I, I don't believe, I was reading them, and I, I don't believe they incorporated the feedback from one of the public comments people from last meeting.
Okay. Is there something specific that you wanted in there?
Yeah, yeah.
Will you submit that in writing to me, and then I will take care of that?
Well, can we just replay the public comment meetings? I mean, that's what the...
I think it's reasonable for you to present that to me in writing.
Well, so the, the minutes are supposed to be a summary of the event, not a word-by-word analysis, so when public comment is noted, it's generally noted who spoke and the topic, but not much more than that. That's what's reflected in the minutes.
I, I think this is important information for the community to be aware of, and I understand it's, that's why the minutes are there, is to have the important information part of it.
If you would like to submit that to me, I will consider that. Thank you.
Okay, well, are we gonna approve them tonight? I mean, so...
Yeah, that sort of begs the question, if, if we're gonna vote on it, don't we need to know what his, his addition's going to be?
Like, for example, I'll, I'll read it. Appraisal page fifty, the potential rental income during the first year of the analysis was projected at nearly seventy thousand dollars, sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-two, based on the market rent applied to the subject size. So equals five thousand, eight hundred per month, but Widmire got one thousand, two hundred dollars a month. So like, it's, it's information that a gentleman used his valuable time coming down here, that would like to be in the record as part of our decisions. And another one, like, for example, on page twenty-two of the assessed value in 2021, just, just a year before, we bought it for a million dollars. It was assessed at three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, three hundred and seventeen, and then a year later, all of a sudden, it gets appraised at a million dollars. So this is...
I would still accept a motion to accept the Consent Agenda, and then we can discuss. Is there a motion? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
So moved and seconded, now is any, any discussion of the Consent Agenda?
I don't believe we have discussion on a Consent Agenda. You guys just get to steamroll this over and over again.
Well, if you would rather not have discussion, we'll just call a vote.
I would rather have discussion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Okay, the, the Consent Agenda has been accepted.
Did you vote nay, or were you calling nay? Because if it...
Voted aye. We asked for nay votes, and no one said anything. I, I, well, I'm, I'm still trying to track where we're at there, John, if you don't mind. For the moment, I've, I've watched the last few minutes. First off, there was a question addressed to the Chair, but the President answered it. And then the Chair's doing this, and then he was brokering a separate deal with Trustee McKenzie that said if you, if you would give it to him in writing after the fact, that he would incorporate it. And so I was still back to trying to understand how that becomes part of the actual minutes and part of the Consent Agenda, because if we do approve it as a Consent Agenda, then there's no modification, addition, subtraction, or whatever. So either we're doing it as is, and we're approving the Consent Agenda, or we're gonna go back and we're gonna look at the minutes, not approve it as a Consent Agenda, and then look to make a motion to amend the amendments, and either add or subtract as being requested, and then we approve or disapprove that. So this whole thing got kind of interesting in the process of procedure. So I'm trying to figure out exactly which direction we're going.
We're moving north, and the Chair is going to order that we will vote on the Consent Agenda. If Trustee McKenzie wishes to submit information in writing to me, I would consider bringing that back for a amendment to the, to the minutes in the future date. But as far as I'm concerned, right now, we're going to go ahead and vote on the Consent Agenda as published. Mr. Chairman, I thought we already voted. We did.
Well, that's not how it's done, but hey, if you're last time in the chair, I guess whatever you want, but for all the criticism I took, that's not how this works, that's not how it's supposed to be done, after being Chair for a while, I know that much. So, all right.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate your comments all the time.
Sure you do, that's a fine thing to say.
The unfinished business we have now, is there any further unfinished business from any of the trustees? Not appearing, we will move on to new business. The first item for action is property acquisition. This item was on the agenda for a executive session. Trustees usually like to have executive sessions to negotiate with property purchases, so that we can all join in, but unfortunately, for two straight meetings, Trustees Banducci and, and Greg have rejected having an executive session, so we have not met an executive session to discuss this and work this out, so we're gonna bring it into ordn, into open session to do so. Thank you, Sarah.
Dr. Swain, did you want me to...
Go ahead, yes, please.
Chairman Walden, Trustees, as you are aware, there has been an effort over a number of years to acquire property on Military Drive, as it is adjacent to the college and integral to the future development of the lands already owned by the college. In this particular instance, a seller who owns a home on Military Drive with some partners approached me, asking if the college was still interested in pursuing the acquisition of properties on Military Drive. I explained to him that the process was that the college is bound by statute not to pay any more than appraised value for any property purchase, and if the seller was amenable to that, and was, the seller and his partner was, was amenable to that, that I would proceed with getting an appraisal done. The seller agreed to that condition, and I contacted Kami Peterson of Lakeside Appraisals, who has done other appraisals on our Military Drive properties, actually, I believe she's done almost all of the ones on all the Military Drive properties that are residential. There is, they, there is a difference between a residential, residential appraiser and a commercial appraiser, so you, they can't cross. So anyway, Kami did the appraisal. When I got the valuation from Kami, I shared it with the seller to see if they were amenable to that price, and they said they were, and so we proceeded with doing all the due diligence from a documentation, purchase and sale agreement, title searches, and et cetera. So I am here this evening requesting approval to have the President and I execute on the purchase and sale agreement for seven thirty-seven Military with an appraised value of six hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Thank you, Sarah.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
I, I think it's important to understand that when a community college purchases property, as Sarah said, it has to be an appraised value by statute. So, and what's, what's also important is that those discussions typically take place between the administration and the potential seller, and those, those usually are, are not public discussions, because it's a negotiation. We don't want somebody, if the college is really interested in buying the property, we don't want somebody to come in and start competing and trying to bid it up beyond, because in this community, you know, historically, that can happen. So we want to make sure that, and Sarah did this, preserve the opportunity. So what, the way this does happen is, we put together a purchase and sale agreement, it is signed by the sellers, and, and, and the administration does, does also agree to it, but it is all very clearly and stated in the contract, this is subject to approval by the Board of Trustees, and if the Board does not approve it, it doesn't go through. If the Board approves it, it can go through. So what, what my office does, we prepare a resolution, and the resolution sets forth the, basically the terms, the history and the terms, and I've given each of the Board, each of the trustees, a copy of the resolution that, that we've prepared in this case, and, and you've got a copy of the appraisal, so you know that that's consistent. So the resolution also includes the, not only the approval of the sale, if the Board chooses to pass the resolution, but it also documents that the, that the appraised value is entered into the records of the Board of Trustees, which is required by statute. So, Mr. Chairman, to consider here is we need a motion to approve this resolution, which is Resolution twenty twenty-two oh two, which will enter the appraisal into the Board Record and would authorize the President as designee to execute the documents necessary to purchase the property. So a motion is to adopt the Resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh two.
Can I have that motion placed? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
So moved and seconded, is there a discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
And maybe I'll, maybe Trustee Banducci remembers, maybe Sarah, you remember. I'm going back in history, I think when we purchased the mill site, we took forgone balance to do that, and maybe, maybe Mr. Lyons can help with this, and it was like two and a half million dollars that we'd set aside annually for purchase of property. Is, is that correct, your recollection?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, yes, the, the, the forgone, the forgone monies that were started back then, that was kept by each, each Board separate, that, that incremental amount, and to put into a capital fund to be used to purchase property to expand the college's geographic footprint. When, when the college purchased the Stimson Mill Site years and years ago, I don't think anybody member of the Board was here, President Swain certainly wasn't here, that was done, and that, that, that added a huge geographic area to the college for future growth, and that was, that was done. Process there was a little bit different with this, but it, it, it was all, it was done legally, and it was done consistent with eventually judicial review and, and, past judicial review.
Is that the one we got sued over, the mill site, right?
That, that was challenged, yes, it was, and, and, and the court, the court agreed with what the college was doing. College and the foundation cooperated.
As the lease, or because we purchased with the forgone taxes that we pulled in?
The transaction was approved, Trustee McKenzie, so...
Well, which one, there, I mean, there is two. One, we had a lease from the foundation, and one that we actually purchased using the forgone.
Trustee McKenzie, please indicate if you wish to speak, so I can monitor that.
Asking for clarity of what he's saying.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, yeah, what we're dealing with now, that was, that was done properly, in my opinion, was, was there, and I, and I assisted with that. But what we're here for today is to see about purchasing this property, this smaller piece of property, which is adjacent to the, to the campus, and so we have, we have the motion before, before the court, or the court, before the Board.
Is there any further discussion?
Yeah.
Press, Presskey McKenzie.
Mr. Banducci, if Trustee Banducci can go first, if you don't mind.
Hard and I don't think we can hear you.
I'll let Trustee Banducci, Banducci go first.
Trustee Banducci?
Yeah, a couple things. First sidebar. Mark, I'm glad you thought it was right, but you didn't ask Sir Greg's questions, he asked too. That's all right, but just, next time, maybe answer the question. Glad you thought it was legal and okay, though. The concern of the property is, we've recently had a property purchase that came under a lot of scrutiny, and the original appraisal, which was about ninety-eight pages, was withheld from the trustees. At my understanding, the advice of our legal counsel, they gave us a synopsis, and even that, a couple of us didn't get to the meeting, so we reviewed it as quickly as we could. And then further looking at the, the pages that were finally released by one of the other leaders here at the college, so we could see that, there were some concerns, and it was only one appraisal. Normally, in government work, my understanding is for best practices standard is that three appraisals. So here we are now with this property, I've only got one appraisal again, and the date of the appraisal is the twenty-fifth of August, which is two months ago. Now, I was raised here in North Idaho, and winter's coming, snow's flown, property values don't really go up in the wintertime, in the fall, so we've had two months passed, interest rates have come up, housing market is struggling, sales are down, listings are down, values are down, and so I'm looking at an appraisal that's over two months old, and I'm paying six hundred and twenty thousand dollars for this house, and I guess I question that number, whether that's a, a proper number, and whether that's a current and, and number that we should be paying, and if that's really the value that this would be holding. In, end of October, going into the winter here in North Idaho, where very few real estate transactions occur, especially residential, you know, few in, in the falls, people are trying to get settled before school starts, a few in the springs, people are getting ready to move or relocate in the summer, but we're certainly not at the optimum time for residential transactions with a two-month-old appraisal, and that seems like an awful lot of money, six hundred and twenty thousand. We'll set a record for anything that we've ever spent on a residential house over there. So I just have some concerns, and I want to make sure we vetted it, and we've looked at this, and that we're doing our best as fiduciaries. Yeah, we have money, but just because we have it doesn't mean we need to spend it, it's still the taxpayer's money, and we are fiduciaries. So I do have some concerns on the, on the, again, on how current this, this appraisal is, and where we're at on this number.
Thank you for your comments. Is there further discussion?
Yeah.
Trustee McKenzie.
Okay, so my experience purchasing properties, which is to be the third one that I've been on a board on, that they did it, is the appraisals really haven't, aren't done until the Board has expressed an interest into purchasing the property. So as you just said, like, this appraisal then must have been ordered before we even met for executive session, and that wasn't properly noticed. Is that true?
Um, Trustee McKenzie, as, as...
I mean, it was three days after we...
Trustee McKenzie, as I said, as I said at the beginning of my comments, that I am operating under the guidance that I've been provided long-term by the Board to acquire properties on Military Drive.
All right, all right. And this appraisal company, is it the same company that did the, just previous properties a couple months back?
The Foreground Grill, no, sir, it's not the same company.
How was the appraisal company chosen?
It was chosen based on the fact that we had used this company with, for prior appraisals on, on Military Drive for the other properties that we have acquired on that.
For the other residential versus business?
Yes, yes, sir.
Interesting. And like, I, this is, how, I notice this one has a shop on it, and like, I, I guess th- this is not the property, so like, there was a property that Widmire was renting to himself through his property management company that the college wasn't even aware of, but likely, like, to his credit, Steve Widmire was actually paying fair market rate for what he was renting. Is, is this one, like, adjacent to that one, or like, where, where is it?
This particular location is next door to, it is seven thirty-seven Military Drive, it's the third house from Parking Lot A on Military Drive on the side facing the mill site.
All right. I just, I just feel that this, I mean, I, I was even walking past Lyons and Walden's conversation about how just let, let us, referring to Todd Banducci and me, speak as much as we want, because essentially, you got the votes wrapped up already. I just feel like this is just one more example where votes of this Board have been coordinated outside of Board meetings, and I just feel like you three appointed trustees have had such unchallenged success in coordinating your decisions outside of Board meetings, that you're just doing it again and again, and I just feel you're just steamrolling. Anyone else on this Board, not taking input from the community, even though they're asking you to amend the minutes? And I just see the accreditation agency, like, they basically told us to start working together, and that's not what you guys are doing.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any further...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Couple of quick questions. Ms. Garcia, how many properties do we own on Military Drive?
We currently own...
Approximately.
We currently own eight properties on Military Drive. And there are, including this one that we're considering, eight that we don't own.
Okay. Is anyone currently living in this property?
Yes, sir. They're on a month-to-month lease.
And any immediate intended use for this property, or we...
Not immediate, intend, intended... Not immediate inten- intended use, the, the long-term plan, as, as the board has, as I've been alluding to or actually stating outright since, about these properties, is, is the idea will be to, if we would like to acquire all the properties on Military Drive and be able to basically close down that as a public street and encapsulate it as part of the campus, and then we can use that space for student housing, or employee housing, or additional buildings as needed.
Thank you very much.
Trustee Banducci?
Sarah, have you, have you had the opportunity to do a walkthrough on this property?
I have not.
Do we have anybody here that has? Because I'm, I'm not familiar with the property. I'm just looking at the picture.
Yes, sir.
And if this was a commercial building, I would not call that a Class A office space. So I'm trying to get a feel for exactly what the quality of this residence is. At first blush, at least from the picture, I'm not thinking it's terribly high.
And, and Trustee Banducci, I, Chair, well, the Trustee Banducci, if you'll, you'll allow me a little grace here, the, the appraisal was done in August, we, I did come to the meeting in September, prepared for an executive session to have a conversation about this property at that time, and we were unsuccessful in going into session because it was not on the agenda as an action item, we could not discuss it last month. So this has been the earliest convenient, the earliest potential that we could have this conversation about this particular property, so that is why the appraisal is two months old.
Well, I don't believe that's the question I asked, but thank you for the information. My question was, has anybody done a walkthrough of that property, or is there anybody in this room that could speak to the condition of that property? Again, looking at the picture, it's not terribly impressive, so I'm wondering, you know, the...
No, sir, because...
What we have here.
Because the property is currently occupied, we have to get permission from the, from the occupants to even do the appraisal, and I did not accompany the appraiser at the time that, that she got that permission.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple more questions.
Yes, please, go right ahead.
Ms. Garcia, of the other residential properties that have been purchased on Military Drive, how many had more than one appraisal?
Zero.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Garcia, is there still money in the capital fund to cover this, this purchase?
Yes, sir, there is, in the capital investment reserve, there is ample funds to cover this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee McKenzie, yes.
I would just like to relay, of the many people who've asked me questions about this, when I say that the college did receive an appraisal and try and justify the good workings going on here at North Idaho College, a huge quantity of people just came back, you only had one appraisal, and to hear that it's common practice, when, when, what I'm hearing from the feedback in other business communities is, is, that's not right, and I would advocate that we at least get one more appraisal. That's not, I think that'd be wise.
Thank you. Are there any further comments?
I, I think also, I mean, I feel like you guys got these votes already wrapped up in your lame duck session, so...
Mr. Chairman, I object. We have no lame duck session.
You're not coming back again, sir, you just said down below that this is your last...
I would hope that we could treat each other with some respect and dignity and work through problems and come to conclusions, and at this point in time...
I have one more question. Was the mill site the property that Steve Widmire resigned from the North Idaho College Board over, or was it a different one?
Now, does that have anything to do with this motion?
I'm just trying to...
No, no.
Highlight that this North Idaho College does not have a great track record acquiring properties.
You asked me to speak to the motion.
And I would like to even have, like, a full, honestly, review of all the properties that we've had in the past twelve years.
You could bring that up if you'd like, but right now, the motion is to this property.
I call for the question.
Questions then call for, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed to the motion, nay.
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 The motion passed three to two.
Chairman Wolf.
Yes, Trustee Banducci.
I find that interesting, talking about respect and dignity, that was something I even addressed down below myself, and I would encourage us to quit lying about each other and being truthful about what's current information and what's not.
I would hope we keep personal problems away from this board meeting, please, let's get on to business. Tab two is action item on the president's evaluation, this has been circulated to all of you, the, I would accept a motion to accept this as the evaluation form for the president. Is there a motion?
Is this the first reading?
This is the first time it's been brought up, yes.
Okay, normally we'd have a first, excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Trustee Banducci.
This is the first reading, correct?
This is the first time it's been brought up.
Okay, which by definition I would take as the first reading, is it not our normal practice and procedure that we have a first and a second reading? We have a discussion and talk about it the first reading, and we have the ability to give input on that if we want to make any changes or suggestions, gives us some time to mull it over and chew on it a little bit, and we come back at the second reading, if it's acceptable at that point as is, we vote on it, or if we've incorporated any changes or suggestions. So, being a first reading, I think we should have it to review, have discussion if anybody has any comments or questions, unless you guys, again, have already done all that in advance, it's a fresh thing, does nobody else have anything to say, and it's just, there we are, okay? I'd like some more time to look at it myself, so I'd like us to follow our normal process and procedure and have a second reading.
President Swain.
This is the same evaluation that's been used for several years. The, when I showed it to Shannon, she said this is the same evaluation that they've been using for several years here, so this is not new. The only difference is that she didn't realize that this was a copyright of ACCT, and so, to do it properly, the only, the only change from what has happened previously was to actually properly use the copyright material. So it's, it's something that you've been, if, if you've done evaluations on the president before, it's something you should be quite familiar with.
Yeah, we've been doing it for ten years, we've had several different...
Chair Wolf.
Oh, good, then you're familiar with it, we can go ahead and accept a motion to...
Chair Wolf, I would like to say something.
Trustee McKenzie?
Thank you. Well, I, I actually didn't really enjoy the last, the only presidential review, I did, and I did notice that it was very similar format, and, but what I would like to just say is, I, I think that this would be a decision for, like, the board who would actually be doing the, the review, and respectfully, if you gentlemen plan to get a review in before the next November sixteenth, then, then, then go ahead, but, but if it's not, you, well, I think there's a possibility, Trustee Burchette may be here, but, but for, I'm saying that I don't think you, you two should, should be making this decision respectfully.
President Swain.
I, I acknowledge your perspective, I'd say the, I've been here for a quarter already, and there has not been a policy put in place for my evaluation, and I don't want to wait until the end of the evaluation to approve that, so I would like to get an evaluation from the board that I have worked with for the past quarter. That means we have to impose, we have to approve an evaluation process for the first year so that I can get a quarterly evaluation, and, and I would contend that best practice for presidents is to do a quarterly evaluation, not a summative at the end of the year, so that's, that's actually one of the things that, that is, is part of this process. So there would be, at the end of this quarter, so potentially as early as tomorrow, there might be a, a process going out for evaluation, and then each quarter subsequently.
So, so it is your intention to, to do a review, then? I'm talking to the board members.
What is, what is your question?
As, as in, you're, it is your intention to get a review in before the election?
Yes.
That's what I've asked for.
Yes.
You've asked, like...
I've asked the chair.
The president has asked, and that's why, that's why it's on the agenda.
Okay, well, it just seems like there's a lot of communication outside of board meetings that's not going to other trustees, so, okay, that now, thanks a lot, that's good to know.
It's, it, I mean, that's part of the process, is I meet with the chair prior to every meeting, go over the agenda, this is one of the items I propose that we address as a quarterly evaluation.
And that's also why we have a second reading, so when the rest of the board, we don't have a dictatorial chair, sir, I mean, that's what we just had to listen to a fellow resigned trustee scream about for a year and a half, and what, we're all five board members, and if we want to have inputs to it, this, boom, present it, done, vote, over again, whether it be real estate, your presidential report, or, I mean, so many things.
I'm going to ask legal, legal counsel, are we required to have first and second readings on something that has already been accepted and used and is just being redone for the new president?
Mr. Chairman, first and second readings are not required for, for many of the items that come up, it has been practiced to have a first and second item, there are multiple times when, when the second reading has been waived and we've gone right and, and dealt with the matter on a first reading, so it's no, answer your question, it's not required, it has been used in the past, depending on the situation.
Thank you. Trustee Banducci?
Well, first, I want to address what Mark just said, yeah, that was true until former trustee Howard kind of went, ah, and so for the last while, we never had just a single reading, everything was read twice, at, at his insistence, so kind of interesting how that kind of changes back and forth and get the interpretations, the normal process.
Depends on who it favors.
It's first and second. The other part of this is interesting, we have our normal convention of, in the spring, doing the review for the president, and so now we're going to taste the, change the process and procedure, and we're kind of doing it unilaterally here, to what, to what end, I don't, I, I'm not sure I fully understand, to try to squeeze something in, when this is our last board meeting, and you're looking for a review from us, when two-fifths of the board at least is going to be gone before the results of that, hmm, very interesting, I, I'm not sure I understand the, the purpose of trying to rush this in and do this exactly, or the necessity of it, and, and I don't know what typical best practices are for colleges, but I've been on the board for ten years, and normally we've done one annual review, so...
Maybe it's time for a change.
Well, I'd say it takes someone of character.
Excuse me, I'm still chairman, yet. Maybe it's time for us to listen to the president and see what he would like in terms of evaluation to help him be a better president for this university.
May I, may I say something?
I think if, if he would like to have a three-month evaluation by trustees who have been working with him for three months, I think that's a wonderful thing for him to do. If you want to wait a month and have any new trustees on who know him not at all through the evaluation, I don't think that's a valid evaluation. So, I don't usually speak to these motions because I'm the chair, but I think that this needed to be said.
You missed the point, it's not that I think you should delay it a month for the new trustees, I think the whole process is premature, and I, I'm trying to understand why we're suddenly going to change our normal practices here, and, and, and what the rationale behind that is, it just, just seems very convenient that we're doing this at this...
Chairman Wolf, if I may?
Trustee McKenzie, yes.
I would say that you're, you're asking the wrong questions, sir, you're asking what's legal, and let me just exercise one hundred percent of my legal rights versus what's the best for this college, and, and what's the, what's the best that even though I may have the votes in hand, sir, or, or, you know, like, what, what, you have to think, this process that we're agreeing to right now with the president is, is setting it for a whole year, and the, the board that may get elected in November, I mean, they may just disagree, they want to do things different, if I had, if I knew that we were just going to, this was a, immediately just a first reading like this, I would have loved to have more input on this instead of it just dropped on us like so, because the last review, it was, is not good, like, there's, there had to be a better way of doing it.
Thank you for your comments, I think it's good that we can have a discussion like this, but we still have a motion on the floor, and the question we call for, all those...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have another question, President Swain, who participates in your evaluation?
The, the board.
Not faculty or, or staff?
No, just the board.
Thank you.
Is there a motion on the floor? I think we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Three ayes, two abstains.
One nay.
One nay, one abstain.
One nay.
The next item has to do with discussion of upcoming agenda topics.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt you, but did we miss the revised faculty employment policy, tab one?
I think that was in the consent agenda.
Oh, was that in the consent, okay, hadn't checked that off.
Thank you. Discussing the upcoming agenda topics, Dr. Swain.
So, consistent with this, our recruiting update, our comprehensive enrollment data, you'll hear an enrollment data update, but we're trying to develop a, a, a better tool for analyzing where we are with enrollment, and one of the things you'll note, even in tonight's enrollment update, it does not count anything that has anything to do with workforce development, because it's not for, the workforce development is not for credit, and the state and federal government don't count that, however, if you talk to our business folks in the community, the, the non-credit workforce development probably has the greatest immediate impact on the community, because employers come to us, they ask for training, we develop the training in conjunction with them, their employees come to us, we're efficient at it, we send them back well-trained employees, but none of that gets tracked under the current system, so we're trying to develop a system that will track that, provide accurate impact of all the work that's being done. There are actually just, it's, it's hard to track because of our, the, the current systems, but as many as six thousand unique students go through that program every year, so it is larger than our Ford credit programs on campus, and that just gives you some indication of what the, the impact of North Idaho College is on the community, and it's just not counted. And so, I've been working with Doug and Vicky Isaacson to, to develop that system, but it's, we, we don't have the, the same tools that allow us to track the Ford credit stuff don't exist for the non-credit stuff, and so we've been working really hard to figure that out. Our recruiting update has become a very comprehensive program that goes everything from the, a marketing plan that we have not had, to a revision of Doug Anderson's road shows, and how we're getting out and coordinating with the community. So, there's a, there's a whole bunch of things that, that have not been done or coordinated well, that we're trying to pull all together, so that will be a future agenda item. And then strategic planning, I've reached out to the, to Trustee McKenzie and Trustee Banducci about that, because they'll still be here, but trying to work on strategic planning, so I'll say, like, the, the need to acquire property, or the, the move to acquire property is a very strategic move, but figuring out what to do with it is not included in our strategic plan, so we need to work on that, there's, there is a, a great use for it, we've already started, as Ms. Garcia talked about, we've already started the process of discussions about building dorms for students and for potentially faculty and staff housing in, in those areas that would be a public-private partnership. Those discussions have already started, just to find out what's possible, and that will be part of our, one, one component of our strategic plan, so those are the things that we'll put on the agenda. And then the last thing is our updated website, Ken has been working really hard with his team to get the website up to date, and so you'll start to see some changes being broadcast by December, I'm told, Ken is not nodding his head in that maybe, but, but December or soon after, so you'll start to see that, we'll, we'll go through and, and have that on the agenda for the future meetings.
Thank you. We'll move on to informational items.
I have something I want to say. Can I say something?
Trustee McKenzie, you have a question regarding this?
Yeah, future agenda topic items, so last board meeting, I was under the, understanding that we were going to have the Fort Ground Grill agenda item on, on this board meeting's agenda, where I was going to bring up, like, the extra concerns of having a bar on school property, and it kind of relates to rash property acquisitions, which we just keep doing, and like, there's things, schools that the public may not just generally know about, like, CLERI Act compliance, that's CLERI Act compliance, which relates to alcohol incident reporting on school grounds, so when you have a, a bar on property, and, and there's an... So when you have a bar on property and and there's an incident with alcohol that goes on NIC's reporting, so is having a bar on campus additional concern with regards to CLERI Act compliance? Is is that something that we should even know about? Did other trustees know about?
I'm familiar with the CLERI Act, and we have not had any violations, and we have notified the the operator of the foreground grill to terminate the lease, and so that is in the process now.
What day will that become effective?
November, end of November. Yeah, end of November.
End of November. And if any incidents revolving alcohol were to happen at that bars?
It depends. They're not all, they're not all necessarily related to the to the college, but we'll, if it's, if it's reported, if if there is a report that's required, we will report.
Thank you for your concern. We'll move on to fall enrollment and updates. And it looks like we have.
We have a trio.
Trio here, so I'll invite all the trio to come on up.
Good evening, Chairwold, trustees, and President Swain. I'm here to provide you with a high-level overview of our enrollment for Fall '22. We will be coming back before you in November with a full board report. But our numbers currently show that enrollment is down 6.2%, and that headcount is at 4,299, and that full-time equivalency is also down 7.2%. We are seeing enrollment in our academic CTE and non-degrees students down with dual credit up. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Doug Anderson, who's going to speak to you a bit more about the road shows that he's putting together for the CTE programs.
Chairwold, trustees, and President Swain, I don't know if you, any of you have ever heard of the NIC road shows we do out to the local high schools. We had to terminate them a couple of years ago because of COVID, and the high schools shut us down, but we're back to scheduling the road shows again. And we do those in the fall and spring to all the regional high schools that that will allow us, which is most all of them. They really enjoy the road shows. So how a road show works is, the first road show started with myself talking about three students that I saw the potential many, many years ago. Now we see between 400 and 600 kids at a typical road show. And the big ones we're going to do this year, we're going to hit Quarterly and High School in Lake City, and we're looking at several thousand students at at each one. So with the road show, what we do is, we have the credit and non-credit, and we have the transfer side, the CT side, and the whole purpose is to expose the students to the different career options that are available at NIC. And it's really exciting. The CT programs typically have hands-on events that they can do, and we bring employers in also, because a lot of the high school students want to know what the potential is after they get out of NIC. So it's exciting, we're doing this again, and this is a great opportunity for us to hit those targets for the enrollment for Fall of '23 back in those schools. So anyway, it's exciting that we're back to those, and it's truly, it's truly a joy to go out there and and interact with 500, 600 students at a high school and show them what NIC has to offer. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Chairwold, Dr. Swain, esteemed guests, and other members of the Board of Trustees. North Idaho College provides certificates and degrees in eight healthcare areas, including dental hygiene, radiology technology, physical therapy assistant, medical laboratory technology, surgical technology, medical assistant, practical nursing, and the associate degree in nursing. All of those programs, with the exception of the practical nursing program, are nationally accredited. Surgical technology, as Dr. Swain indicated earlier, started admitting student cohorts of 10 in the fall of each year. We've increased that to where we now admit twice a year, and will move to admitting to three times a year. As of last week, there were at least 60 open positions for SURG techs in the region, and there's been traditionally a $20,000 sign-on bonus offered at 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 least one healthcare facility, and we believe probably two. Our students often are hired before they graduate from the program. The medical laboratory technology admitted its first cohort in the spring of 2017 with 10 students, and the, at that time, it was to admit every other year. We now admit every year to that program. The, they've graduated 33, 34 students, and of that, 33 have passed the national examination and has a success rate of greater than 10% with the average pass rate is for the nation. Of those 33 graduates, five have challenged the medical lab scientist, which is a step above the medical lab technology, and they have successfully challenged that exam and been able to move up without going to additional schooling. There is discussion amongst the Idaho colleges about feasibility of entering into a consortium agreement, since NIC has the only MLT program in the state, so we will continue to to look at that opportunity. The radiology technology program traditionally admits 20 students every other year. There is a demand for radiology technology. There's currently 60 open positions in the region and at least 15 additional positions that are open in general practice, so outside of the acute care setting. We traditionally always exceed the number of applicants, qualified applicants, for that program, and so the goal is for us to move from an every other year admission cycle to an annual admission cycle beginning in 2023. The physical therapy assistant program is is a consortium program. So the home for that consortium program is here at North Idaho College. We partner with other colleges across the state of Idaho to do an admission and work together to deliver that program. NIC has five students that are admitted in Lewiston, and we have 12 students that are admitted up here in Quarterly. This program also has a long history of success, and the five-year average for graduation rate is 94%, licensure exam pass rate is 92%, and we have a 99% employment rate. The practical nursing program admits 20 students annually. This program is approved by the Idaho Board of Nursing. Within the next year, we will pursue seeking national accreditation for this program. The PN program has had 100% NCLEX pass rate, so licensure pass rate. In 2020 and 2021, we're waiting to hear the 22, 2022 rate, and the program continuously exceeds the national average pass rate. The medical assistant program admitted its first cohort in the spring of 2009 with a cap of 16 students. In spring of 2018, they began admitting a second cohort of students. Unfortunately, the state of Idaho decided that it would be wise to remove all of the requirements around requiring certification of of those students, and so we saw dramatic decrease in the number of students that we had. There, the the physicians are are basically training their own individuals. So we have put that program on hiatus for a year as we retool to meet the needs of the industry and move that to a competency-based program, and hope to reopen that in Fall of 2023. The dental hygiene program. This, this program admitted its first cohort in the spring of 2019, and they'll have their first pending ceremony in December. The program took a little bit of work to get off the ground, but it has been hugely successful. The program underwent the initial accreditation review in 2018 and recently had a site visit to move to full continuing education or accreditation. The visit occurred in early September, and the visitors shared they will recommend full accreditation. NIC has five students in Lewiston and 10 students in Quarterly. There's been 100% retention rate for those 15 students. 100% of the students have successfully passed the written and clinical local anesthesia examination, and as, and we expect that 100% will pass their their certification exam as well. As we prepare to admit January 2023 cohort, there are currently 37 qualified applicants for 15 positions, so we know that there's room for growth in this area as well. So we hope within the next two years to move to an annual admission cycle rather than just every other year. This, this dental hygiene program, thanks to grants, we were able to remodel the Winton Hall, which now houses the NIC dental clinic. Students there provide low-cost dental hygiene services to the community, which is much needed. These students have participated in additional community service activities, including oral cancer screenings, providing 200 sealant and silver diamide treatments, and will conduct a free clinic for the veterans needing dental hygiene services. 15 of the students presented their research project at the Idaho Dental Hygienist Association meeting this last weekend. And additionally, the class received two awards at the association meeting for the sealant clinic and the oral cancer screening, and received a grant for the free Veterans Day dental hygiene program that they're going to carry out. Again, the dental clinic has extreme impressive community support, and we had 37 qualified applicants, so definitely a need. Finally, the associate degree nursing program, this program admits 40 students twice per year into the generic program, and another eight students who are practical nurses who want to become registered nurses once a year. The program consistently has licensure pass rate greater than 90% and high completion rates. Most of the, most of our graduates have jobs prior to graduation, and we have two to three times as many qualified applicants for the program every semester. The program underwent a recent site visit, which Dr. Swain indicated earlier, from our accrediting body. There were three visitors. While the final decision regarding accreditation will not be made until March of 2023, the site visitors have shared with us that they will recommend eight years of continuing accreditation. While the visitors did identify three areas of needing development, they were quick to identify all the areas that the program excels in. NCLEX pass rates are significantly exceed the national average pass rate, not only for ADN programs, but also for BSN programs. While the faculty is relatively new to the education world, they are dedicated to student success, and they they change their presentation to their presentation styles to meet the needs of the students. The support systems in place for the students, ranging from financial aid, e-learning, tech support, library services, advising, and scholarships, were identified as being amazing. The students reported that they could have selected other nursing programs, but they chose to come to NIC because of the reputation of the program. The employers reported they selected NIC grads to hire over other nursing programs because of the quality of our graduates. The goal for the associate degree nursing program will be to seek additional clinical placement opportunities so that we can increase the number of admissions that we accept each, with each cohort. The health professions and nursing programs are a testament to the program directors and the faculty that staff those programs, as well as the faculty and staff across the NIC campus. There's a huge need for healthcare workers in the area, so we will continue to meet, to work the need, to meet the needs of our community partners and meet the need that they've expressed. Thank you.
Are there any trustee questions? Yes. Trustee Banducci.
Erle, Erle, I have, I have some questions, please. Lot of information. Trying to catch all of it, and a couple, three things caught my attention. Talked about challenging the exam, is that sort of like test testing out of something?
Yes.
So they demonstrated a proficiency somehow, and then basically then they didn't have to go any.
Yes. They, so essentially, for the medical lab technologists, if they have one year of experience in the field, then they are eligible to be able to challenge the MLS, which is the next step above. And five, at least five of our students have elected to do that and been successful.
Who, who did, who do they go to to do that? Is that something internal, or is that an outside agency that?
No, it's a national, it's a national exam, so.
So who, so who, how do they, when they challenge it, who hears their challenge, I guess? Let me ask that question. Then when they prove that they're okay, do they submit a package to somebody, and they review it, and then say yes?
I, I believe that they have to show that they've met their qualifications, and then the national board that offers that exam says, okay, you, you can take the exam.
Okay. You mentioned about all of our, normally, everything's at the federal level except for the LPN, and then later you circled back and said that's at the state level. Is there a new, but then you talked about maybe going to the federal levels. Is that something that's going to be new and available at the federal level, or is it something we've just gone ahead and just used at the state level, something derived within Idaho? Like, is Washington colleges, are they doing a Washington thing, or would they be at the federal? Or is this kind of a new transition?
So the national accreditation has been available nationwide for quite some time. Traditionally, it has been Idaho, it has traditionally said state approval is enough, and so there's, I don't know that there's any other programs, PN programs in the state of Idaho that have sought national accreditation, and that is also true for the schools in Washington, as far as I know.
So they're like the wa, at the state level there also, general?
Correct, correct. And and we are, we all, we are all required to have Idaho Board of Nursing approval in addition to, we've sought national approval.
Gotcha. Okay, okay, very good. One last thing, since we've mentioned earlier about the upcoming open house and ribbon cutting here on Thursday, as we, and as you were talking about trying to ramp up instead of every other year, every year, and some of those things, and I, and I was one of the folks that voted for the Myra upgrade. So where are we at on, on being able to utilize that upgrade and 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 increasing our capacity? Because it seems like the issues we've had the last couple of years, or maybe for the last number of years, is being able to get enough instructors, you know, to get people that will step out of industry and and instruct, because usually they're taking a pay cut. And then we've had some problems, at least with our nurses, with the, with our clinicals or practicals. And then the last couple of years in particular presented some challenges because of the COVID. So where are we at on on actually being able to grow this?
So we have great support in the community to continue to grow the programs. We are continuing to work with the community to help us identify ways that we can recruit more faculty. That probably has been one of the greatest barriers for us, is to have enough faculty, particularly clinical faculty. I will say that this semester is probably the first semester that I've gone since I've been in the director position, that we've been a month into the start of school before we were fully staffed with our adjunct faculty. We've been doing some work with human resources to see what we can do to improve the salaries for our nursing faculty. The state board, actually, the legislative branch has has actually given us some additional support with a $200,000 line item for specifically for community colleges to help us increase the pipeline or be able to provide additional education.
How, how much of that is ours, Erle, do you know?
The, the 200, each community college was given $200,000 line item.
Thank you.
So.
That's helpful.
So it is helpful. So we continue to work, we've talked about, is there the opportunity for joint appointments from the hospitals for their staff to be able to step in and help us with clinical education? Looking at, can, is there something that we can do for an evening program? We have facilities, we probably don't use our, our lab or simulation lab on, during the evenings as much as we could.
Last question, are, are there any continuing mask issues that are going to impact our students? To do the clinicals, the practicals? I remember having the conversation with Rick Rasmussen last year, as we were all working hard to try to get everybody placed, and, you know, I guess it's been almost a year ago now, as, and trying to be able to keep people in the program so they have to step out or or discontinue. And so are we going to have any issues between Kootenay and Northwest Specialty Hospital or these other places with any of our students where they're required to have masks? Are we still required to have masks, and is that a problem? Are we still required to have masks, and is that a problem?
Masking has not, well, masking is still required in the acute care facilities, and we have, if our students are caring for any COVID patients, they are required to wear an N95 mask, which we're able to fit test all of our students with so that we're, so that we can ensure their safety in the clinical, in the clinical facilities. Because our lab on campus is set to mimic what happens in the acute care facilities or the clinical facilities that our students are going to, we do ask the mask in the lab, but that's the only place that we ask them to mask.
Are they required to have any of the shots?
Many of our clinical partners, yes, do require that they be vaccinated. So in order to get through the program, either any of the healthcare programs, it does become necessary for students to be vaccinated.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to share a little personal story. Some months ago, I had a pacemaker put in, and at the time of the surgery, daylight, I had to stay over. There were two of us in critical care that night, and every two hours, they wake you up and take your vitals. Partway through the night, a nurse came in and woke me up, and we started talking. She was an LPN from Tennessee. Her charge, or her supervisor encouraged her to continue her education, and I think she was afraid to go to college, but she did. She came to NIC, she got her two-year degree, she went to LCSC, got her four-year degree, and at the time I was there, she had completed a cardiac care course online from Tennessee, her home state. She was going back there to graduate, and her parents were going to attend her graduation, and it was the first time they'd ever been on a college campus. And none of that would have happened if you hadn't been here. Thank you.
I should also take this opportunity to, if you're not aware, NIC does have a close working relationship with LCSC, and so the students that are in the nursing program are allowed to concurrently enroll in the BSN program at LCSC. And as long as they remain in good standing, they can continue to take courses during the summers when they're not taking NIC courses. And many of our, probably about fifty percent of our students that are enrolled in the associate degree program, complete their bachelor's degree at the same time that they're completing their associate degree, or within one semester after they complete their associate degree. That just makes them all the more employable, and to meet the employer's desires for BSN prepared nurses.
Thank you, Erlene. Are there any other questions or comments?
I have one more question, but for Mr. Anderson, if I may. Doug? How you doing, partner?
Good.
Thanks for being here tonight.
Absolutely.
Love your roadshow.
Thank you.
I've heard a lot of great things about what you're doing out there, and you've had the opportunity to brief a lot of folks about that facility and give tours to some of the candidates that are currently running and others. I keep getting the feedback of how your enthusiasm and expertise just shines through, so I want to commend you for that. You're a great ambassador for the college.
I appreciate that.
Doug, where are we at, out at Parker? And I'm not looking for a course-by-course breakdown, but generally speaking, for what we would consider capacity for our classes, and about what percentage are we out at Parker right now for putting bottoms in the seats? If you could give me a while, you know?
Yeah, you know, this year, probably we're seventy-some percent. There's a few programs that are down this year, and it's economic-driven.
In what capacity? They're getting jobs, so they're not coming to school, or they can't afford to come to school?
It's a multitude. Some of it's the housing in the area, and the cost of housing for students is difficult, and many of our programs are two-year programs, so they're in it for the long term. The employers are desperate, so they're increasing the wages they're paying to folks that don't really have any experience, and they're willing to start training them on the job. So Milrite would be a good example, where some companies are saying, if you want to be a Milrite, come work for us, we'll pay you this much, and they're training them on the job.
Now, if I recall, Milrite can make some pretty good money.
Absolutely.
I mean, like eighty, ninety thousand or more.
With the right skill set.
With the right skill set, yeah.
Which we teach, by the way. It's one of those dynamics, there's an inverse relationship between the economy and program exposure. So when the economy's hot and they're paying the kind of wages they are, sometimes it's difficult, they just need the bodies and industry. And so that's where we see workforce training, and numbers go up there, where students can get some of the basic skills through the non-credit side and be employed.
Thank you, I was just kind of wondering where we were at.
Yeah, it's all over the place. Couple of programs are lower than we expected, and somewhere at capacity.
I guess I will have, I'm sorry, one more question, if I may. We had a couple of these programs, Collision Repair, HVAC that we're co-op-ing with the folks there at K-Tech. How are we doing on the numbers and those that we're working with them?
Doing well. The HVAC, we run one cohort of K-Tech students there with the instructor in the auto body collision, and we're running two K-Tech cohorts now with a full-time instructor. And so we see that with HVAC, that they're transitioning to our program, a fair number of them after they get out of K-Tech.
Walking across the parking lot like we'd hoped, okay. Thank you, sir.
Trustee McKenzie?
So, you may have just answered it, so I'm going to ask it simpler for me. I know the dentist program, when I was paying attention, they had multiple times to enroll in a cohort. Is the welding programs or the mechanic programs that we have at Parker, is it still only enroll in August, or is there talk to, two enrollments in a cohort? Or where are we are with that right now?
So it's a typical August start, and the reason is there's the skill sets, the safety and the basic skills, the transition and move forward. And so to do a double start, we're looking at that, where we can do some flip schedules, and I've done that in the past, some flip schedules. And so where we have full capacity, so the welding program?
Big one before the other?
Right, so we're going to do some flip scheduling, yeah. And we're looking at evening cohorts reemerging again as a concept, seeing if we can make evening cohorts more palpable for folks that are working during the day and they want to come evening. And we're looking at a lot of different strategies to be more realistic with the current trends in industry. Compency-based education is one of them, we're going to pilot in the future, and looking at different strategies, some different start points, some base certificates that are for credit-based certificates, so we're exploring every option available to us right now.
Are there any other questions or comments from board members? Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
We'll now have an athletic update, Alex Harris.
Chair Wald, trustees, Dr. Swain, Barrister Lyons. It's my privilege here today to take one for Sean, our A.D. This has been his first presentation to the board, but he was scheduled long before this meeting to go visit the in-laws. So, it's me you get. I'm just going to go ahead and show a little pictures in the background while we go. Start out with a report on where our sports are, our fall sports have been going. Men's soccer, under veteran head coach Ken Thompson in his twelfth season here, had a pretty competitive season. They look to end on a winning note by knocking off a top-ranked Columbia-based college here this week. And our top scorer on men's soccer is freshman Nestor Palacios. He's the team's leading scorer. Women's soccer, enjoying another winning season under reigning NWAAC Soccer Women's Coach of the Year, Kelsey Parsons. Cardinals look forward to another playoff run. Coming here quickly, they're currently ranked seventh in the NWAAC coaches poll. See, I was supposed to do that along, but there we go. Freshman goalkeeper Casey Chavez was named NWAAC Athlete of the Week for the week ending October ninth, as she did not allow a goal for one hundred and thirty-five minutes, shutting out the number-one seeded team in the East Region. And freshman Teresa DeDezma is the team's leading scorer. Men's and women's golf, both of our men's and women's golf teams had a successful fall season under Coach Russell Grove in his eighth season. Women's golf, the golf team placed first at the NWAAC Gadget Valley Tournament with freshman Lauren Bolger and sophomore Navy Wood finishing in the top five. They got second at the Rocky Mountain Battlin' Bear Invitational with Navy Wood taking overall third place, and second at the Oregon Tech Invitational with Navy Wood taking overall fourth place. Men's golf, men's golf team finished first place in each of the team's first three tournaments, winning by two strokes, four strokes, and fourteen strokes. Freshman Josh McCarthen, freshman Hardy Johnson, freshman Kayden Gambini, and sophomore James Parsons all finished individually in the top ten of the Gadget Valley Tournament on September twenty-seventh. Gambini, McCarthen, and Johnson all finished in the top five of the Battlin' Bear Tournament. Josh McCarthen won the Oregon Tech Invitational event individually with a total seven under par over three rounds. Women's volleyball, under ninth-year head coach Kelsey Stanley, the Cardinals once again have a twenty-win season under their belt. They're currently ranked third in the latest NWAAC coaches poll with four regular season games remaining. Look forward to making a lot of noise in the postseason. We are led by freshman Riley Hartwig. She leads the entire NWAAC in hitting percentage, this means nothing to me, at a thirty-eight percent clip, while sophomore teammate Taren Rowley is in the top twenty-five for kills among the NWAAC. Note right here, the final two regular home games are this Wednesday and Friday, both at six p.m. in Christensen Gym. Hope to see some of you there. Upcoming winter sports previews, men's basketball has a very solid showing thus far in the preseason. They attended the Rocky Mountain and Salt Lake Community College Jamborees the past two weekends, and both of these jamborees, our team faced nationally-ranked teams, and our team did more than held their own and at times dominated. The Cardinals will be led by sophomores Julius Mims and Taden King. Their first home event is on November twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, when we host the Best Western Invitational. Women's basketball, a women's basketball team is under the new leadership of our new head coach, Nate Colville, who, side note, went to my rival high school twenty-something years ago, thirteen-hundred miles away, didn't even know I knew him until his first day on campus. They will have four preseason games, two of which are at home, October twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, and their first regular season home game will be December second. The Lady Cardinals will be led by sophomores Kaylee Banks, Paige Beam, and Laney Smith. Men's wrestling, those of you that were able to be out for the red-gray intersquad scrimmage on Saturday, wrestling welcomes interim head coach Derek Booth. Booth was a post-falls native, alum of North Idaho College, where he was All-American at one hundred and seventy-four pounds, and helped the Cardinals to a national championship in 2013. Makes me feel really old when we have seasoned coaches coming back to work here that I remember when they were students, but I'm handling it okay. Today, we were just able to start our new assistant coach, Cooper Thomas, who wrestled at Grandview University and is a welcomed addition as a, he was a heavyweight wrestler in college. While they are still looking for a home meet in the first half of the season, they will face off on January twentieth against rival Clackamas at Christensen Gym. We return two All-Americans, Ledger Protrecek and Brant Porter, from a team that finished seventh at the national tournament last year. Just a couple highlights of community initiatives. For all home games through December, if you brought or bring a non-perishable food item for our NIC food pantry, people receive fruit-free admission. On October first, we had homecoming. Those of you that made it out, we had eight sports, either competing or doing a showcase, a free barbecue, and sponsored by the Booster Club. The Booster Club. On Wednesday, October fifth, NIC Athletics hosted the Coeur d'Alene School District Second Perspective Student-Athlete Night at Christensen Gym Gymnasium. So this was a partnership with Lake City High School and Coeur d'Alene High School, where they have student athletes in high school that are looking to find out what it would be like to be a college athlete. So we brought in our own coaches, and then coaches from four years in athletic programs around the region, and they spoke to those students. It was a great event and a great chance to have our local students on campus. On Wednesday, October twelfth, women's soccer hosted Shoot for a Cure Pink Day for Breast Cancer Awareness, and on October nineteenth, women's volleyball hosted their Dig Pink Game for Breast Cancer Awareness, especially in support of Jennifer Boswell, who you may know as the wife of our longtime trainer Randy Boswell. A total of $800 was raised, thanks to the generous support of our fans, Silverwood for donating the prizes, Gary Wood tickets, and NIC Booster Club. That is all I have, I can stand for any questions if you would like them.
Are there any questions or comments from board members? Trustee Banducci?
One of the topics that's been brought up over the last number of months was some questions about parity amongst the coaches. I'm glad to hear that we have now hired an assistant coach for wrestling, we're still one assistant coach short for wrestling, in my opinion. You need three for tournaments to cover the mats. But we see the golf team, and I've not heard any progress on what we're doing to properly compensate our golf coaches into even having an official assistant coach for the golf program. We have a men's and a women's team that the same two individuals are coaching. It's been brought up, and it's been discussed, and it's been pushed around a few times. I've not heard anything on that topic in quite some time, I'm curious to know where we're at on that.
I can say that, given the transition in leadership here, we did have discussions about what that would look like, how we could budget for that, and the upcoming budget process, and that's kind of where we are with that. We're looking at the, if there's inequities in our assistant coaches amongst all the sports, and having that discussion as we move into budgeting. Any new positions, as you know, would need to come for review, but we are talking about that and discussing it, it's ongoing.
Well, gosh, Alex, if you guys need some money, let us know. Apparently we have tons of it, we're spending it right and left, we've got millions in the bank. I'm sure we authorize some money from one account to the other, it's just different color of money what we're spending it on, so, I mean, I mean, how much do we pay a golf coach? I don't think they're exactly in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, you know? So, I mean, we're just talking a few tens of thousands here to get this up to speed and up to par with our most successful athletic program that we have on campus, certainly the men are, they've won everything convincingly, and have been medalists at the events, at the tournaments. So, you know, whoever's in charge of that, please feel free to, you know, make a proposal and come back to the trustees if we have to do an adjustment on the budget, I bet we could find a few dollars to make this right. It's kind of embarrassing that we're doing this and dragging our feet for months, transition or not, I don't care.
Chair Wald, trustee Banducci, I would be happy to take the proposal up through the chain of leadership and see where it goes.
I hope so, it's embarrassing.
If I could weigh in on, I do think it's also embarrassing.
Trustee McKenzie would like to speak?
Yes, I also do think it's embarrassing that we have some individuals on this campus who are working well more than forty hours a week, and they're only making nineteen thousand dollars a year. Think about that for a sec. So, I at least talked to one trustee other than trustee Banducci, who also thinks that's absurd. And if the board needs to allocate some money, I'm fully in support of that.
Thank you for your support.
Are there any other questions for Alex? Thank you very much, Alex.
Thank you.
We're to the point of the agenda for remarks for the good of the order, are there any trustees that wish to make any remarks?
Mr. Chair? Thank you. I would just like to thank the North Idaho College faculty, staff, students, and the community for all the assistance that you provided me during my time on the board. It has been an honor to serve in this position, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Getty, would you like to?
Mr. Chairman, I have before me the True Story by trustee McKenzie. And in the spirit of boardsmanship, I'd just like to thank him, I didn't know I had the ability to do some of the things that you suggested I've done.
We've been luckily spending some time together, and we've, I've been educating you on things that you haven't known, and I'll happily show you the public records of the State Board of Education where I have discovered. and I'll happily show you the public records of the State Board of Education, where I have discovered that you've been trying to undo board decisions that you don't like since December of last year. So anytime you want to sit with me, sir.
I can do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you guys are able to exchange information.
Before we adjourn-
And I stand by everything in this letter that he stands, that he refers to. Stand by it a hundred percent.
Before we adjourn-
And I have receipts. Sorry to keep interrupting.
Before we adjourn-
Chair Wald, if, if I may, sir.
Yes.
You, you know, I'm, I'm gonna make one comment. John, that would have been more appropriate downstairs. I spoke to you about what I had concerns about. If you wanted to address that to, to Greg, that should have been downstairs. That's inappropriate and a remark for the good of the order, to grind your axe and political. I've got a whole bunch of stuff I could do that with. I got a list right here of how the colleges tried to do things prior to the election, taking care, get the foreground off the deal, take care of the event that was scheduled here on campus that's been ca- canceled, that had a, a flyer at the daycare center about the press running two pages to try to cover what's going on in a classroom. There's been so many things that are being cleaned up. I've even was told there was something that Aztec might bring tonight that didn't come up. It's interesting to watch how you guys are trying to clean up your act briefly before the election, trying to make people think that everything's okay, when people know that if the election goes your way, it's all back the way you want it. It, it, it's, it's very cosmetic and, and, and rather sh- rather shallow, quite frankly. So for you to do that out of the good of the order, inappropriate, sir, but right back at you.
I do have one good of the order that I just think it's important that even though it's trustee Getty's last board meeting and his last public comments, he still could not help himself of injecting politics into our board meetings and during his time here. So, I, I just looking forward to getting new trustees who have the best interest of North Idaho College.
I want to thank all four of you for your remarks for the good of the order. Now it's my turn. This is my last time up here as chair. Uh, next month, I will not be a board member, but I would like to share some observations and concerns I have gained over the last six months. Six months ago, I entered into this board situation because of the chaos that was going on at the college, that they were unable to conduct business, because they went from five trustees to four, which was two to two, they could do nothing, to two, and they could not even have an agenda. The State Board of Education stepped in. They did a very good job of calling for volunteers. There were thirty-seven people who volunteered to take on the, uh, the board trusteeship for six months. They vetted all these people, they interviewed, and the three of us were chosen to serve. And I want to thank both of them for their service for this last six-month period. So it's been my privilege to really serve as chair. Uh, I've attempted to facilitate the meetings of the board so that we could get the business done. I've tried not to interject my opinions so that we could get the information through.
You just did.
I have a-
You just did. It was reported to the NWCCU that the two-two split board was passing policies and was a functioning board.
Greg, can you-
You guys don't know your facts, and you keep lying.
Can you please be quiet for just a little bit, or do we have to turn your microphone off?
You can turn it off, but it was reported to the accreditation board that the two-two split board was passing policies and was a well-operating, functioning board.
Is this gonna be thirty seconds or five minutes? Because I don't want to hear a diatribe from you.
And I think remarks of the good of the order are supposed to be well less than thirty seconds.
There is no-
There is no rules with you, sir. It's whatever your power gives you.
Well, I have more to say.
Go ahead, dictator Wald.
I attended-
You've been here all six months.
I attended both candidate forums, the one that Tishaba put on and the one that Micah Grange. So I listened to all six candidates, their views and their qualifications. This is supposed to be a nonpartisan election and a nonpartisan board. It appears to me that there is a K- Cootney County Republican Central Committee group that has been recruited and vetted by that group. I'll call them the Central Committee Group. There are three other candidates to go by the name-
Sir?
You are inappropriate.
Please allow me to speak. If you are elected to the board, you can sit up here and speak at your time.
You weren't elected to the board.
Yeah, that's true.
The Central Committee Group have lived in Cootney County one year, two years, and three years. They have had no interaction with NIC within any of that time and no community involvement. The Friends of NIC group-
This is so disgusting.
A longtime residents of Cootney County with extensive NIC and community involvement.
You should be embarrassed of yourself.
All six candidates are very concerned about accreditation.
All of them claim to be conservative.
I want to thank candidate Hartman for his verification of the board's work in terms of taking care of accreditation problems. He feels that the board has accomplished most of the requirements set down by the Accreditation Agency. Let us look at some of the ideas or some of the areas that he has proposed as having been solved. Let me first of all, though, say that accreditation has not been threatened by anything that is done with the students, faculty. It's all been on the board. The number-one thing that he stated was that the hiring of a long-term president was extremely important, and I'm gonna quote from their report. "The panel recommends that hiring a long-term president as quickly as possible, using a credible and transparent hiring process, including full participation of faculty, staff, students, and community members, is necessary." There was a twenty-seven-member search committee chaired by trustee Banducci, past president, past trustee Howard, and trustee Rochette. They went through a long process of vetting candidates and brought five names to the board for interview. The first stumbling block that I found as chair was that trustee, trustee Banducci wished to delay any choice of president after the election.
That's because the Accreditation Agency gave us time to do that.
And hiring a long-term president as quickly as possible was a recommendation of the ex-
The Accreditation Agency specifically gave us time-
Fortunately-
To let the community weigh in, and you guys specifically- That, yeah. The, the-
You should be embar- you should be embarrassed by it.
Presidential search advisor even recommended it before Christie started coordinating with her.
Can we turn off his microphone so that he will not interrupt everything?
You just want one side of the story.
Fortunately- Fortunately-
You just want-
The arbiter of truth.
Fortunately, a president was chosen. Three votes by the three trustees appointed, two negative votes by the two members of the central committee. The first major, major goal was then accomplished by this board, by, at least by the three of us. The second had to do with a policy necessary to deal with conduct by the board. This policy had been presented, tabled, and moved off back and forth, but it was finally, finally discussed and passed by a three-to-two, three votes once again for the appointed trustees, two negative votes by the two central committee trustees. Guidelines that they mentioned that they wanted to see us try to do as a board was to work with fellow trustees in a spirit of harmony and cooperation in spite of differences of opinion.
You haven't done.
Respect the majority decisions of the board. Maintain the highest standards of civility and respect according to public office through the absence of unwarranted criticism of fellow board members, the board, NIC administration, and employees. The agency has also asked us to send them a tapped, a taped of each of the board members, board meetings, so they can evaluate the board's actions and act of each board member in terms of their behavior and at times, Greg, their language, which is apprehensible. The third big area that, Mr. Hartman, to say was to hire senior leadership. Once again, they asked that we try to do this as quickly as possible through the proper ways. Fortunately, we were able to hire Dr. Swain at a reasonable time, and he is well into that process, so this is being done. The next item is one that's been really troublesome for this board, and that is delineation of the role of the board as a trustee and the role of the president. There are specific differences, and I'll read directly from policy. "Demonstrate respect and consideration of the recommendations of the college presidents. While it is understood that the board may not agree with all recommendations of the president, is imperative the board demonstrate respectful consideration of the recommendations of the president. To consider an act of the recommendation of the president in all matters of policy regaining to the governance and welfare of the college and the welfare of the student. That it is, the trustees are responsible for recreating and maintaining the spirit of true cooperation and a mutually supportive relationship with the CEO." Dr. Swain has tried to reach out to all the trustees over the last three months, and with multiple calls to you, you, you have never responded to any of his calls, Greg. That's terrible.
He emails regularly.
That is to provide overall direction to the college by setting policy while allowing the president the authority to provide daily administration of said policies.
I'm lucky. All of my family members were alive this month.
Individual trustees with questions regarding the operations of the college as, as inquiries concerning employment of admission to the college, complaints about students, complaints from faculty or staff, complaints or questions about administration, complaints or questions about facilities shall convey to the office of the president for consideration of possible action. The report stated that in the past, a board chair had actually tried to hire non-CEO administrators and had actually gone to a, a, a faculty, a faculty member to try to change a student's grade. So this is an area that needs, needs a great deal of work in terms of this board is not complying with what they want to do. So now this brings us to the election of November eighth. We have three central committee candidates that attest to very close ties, similar values and ideology, and the ability to work closely together with the two incumbents, central committee trustees. If one of these is elected, there will be a majority. The trustee Banducci has promised he will be able to reverse all we have done. In fact, I was unfortunately present at a, at dinner tonight, and I heard trustee Banducci negatively go after trustee Getty, saying that we will control this board after November and fifteen days. We will control most everything in this city. We will, we already control school boards, we do the hospital board. The only problem we have is we may not be able to control the school or the hospital board, or maybe even the city council, but we're out to control everything else. I abode it, and I will closely watch this election for the results. And I'm not the only one that's going to be watching this election results. We have young people and their parents in their high school years looking for a place for dual enrollment and future study. They're all going to be looking at the results of this election. We have students and prospective students in our professional technical areas and work-study programs. They too are gonna be watching this election. We have local employers who depend upon NIC for their workforce. They're going to be looking at this election. The Northwest CCU, the Accreditation Agency, is going to be looking at this election to monitor governance of the trustees before their April revisit, because actions in the past have cost this college hundreds of thousands of dollars because of their actions. The ICrips, the State Insurance Agency, is going to monitor what happens this election. They are monitoring governance to see if they are willing to give us insurance once again, which would save us hundreds of thousands of dollars that we've had to go to a different insurance company. The NIC Foundation donors are going to be looking to this, this election.
That's what it's really about.
If they can once again safely donate hundreds of thousands of dollars for student aid and college needs. The state of Idaho and beyond are going to be looking at this election to see if the ideology of a certain number of people can flourish within like-minded visuals and control a county and a state in the future. This meeting is adjourned.